Good. Oh, okay.
Now you're live.
All right, good afternoon. This is Mike Harmer. We're going to start the Town of Dewey Beach Planning, Zoning Commission Public Hearing and Meeting. It's Friday, May 12th at 4:30. We're going to convene the meeting and opening ceremonies. We'll do a pledge of allegiance first.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
Say you're here.
Mark Northquist. Dave Lyons, President.
Mike Harmer, President.
Dale Cook, President. Fred Towns, in Town Solicitor.
Bill Zoll, for Town Manager.
All right, that takes care of roll call. Like a motion.
We have Jim, you have some of the others.
Well, we have Jim Deeds on teams and a couple others. Gary Persinger, Commissioner Persinger, and yeah, Dawn Hinks, Town Code Official, online. So, welcome, everybody. And let's see, we'd like a motion to adopt the agenda?
I make a motion to adopt the agenda.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Sent the minutes around and look to get those approved. So, the agenda actually shows it was January 21st. That's when I think that date was wrong. But it was the date of November 4th, 2022. Dale's going to make a comment on that. But motion to, what we'll do is we will, let's see, motion to approve a second, then we'll have a discussion. So, for comments. So, motion to approve the minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second? I'll second it.
Dave with a second. And now we'll discuss any changes. Anybody see any changes?
There will be changes, but the date has to be made.
Yeah, so it's, the year was wrong. It was 2020, it had 2021, it's 2022. Typo error, minor. We'll correct that and get those over to Town Hall. Per process, so if anybody else has any changes, please say it now. None? Look for a motion to approve. And second, anybody got a second?
I'll second it.
Dave with a second, all in favor, aye? Aye. All right. We're going to open the public hearing. We've got five things on the agenda, and we'll just try to take them in order. So, the first thing is public hearing on ordinance to amend Chapter 185-30 of the Municipal Code to allow signage consistent with current standards and practice. So, we have an ordinance that was drafted. And basically, it's pretty self-explanatory. I personally think, you know, the way it's written, I think it's written real well. It's a more of a safety issue and aesthetics issue. For example, Item A, you can see the highlight there where it says cannot be a nuisance, and it clarifies to surrounding properties, including signs that provide moving spotlights that might distract pedestrians or motorists, revolving lights, animation and blinking or moving lights. Scratches out the section below that's similar to that, replace it with what's underlined. And then the new C, D, and E aren't changed at all. It's just, they just did editorials on those. So, that is the item. So, anyone have any comments from the P and Z? See none? Anybody from the public have any comments? Is anybody from the public there, Kate? All right, thank you. We will close the public hearing. And we'll look for a motion to approve this ordinance.
Motion to approve.
Mark's going to make a motion to approve. We'll look for a second. For a second?
I'll second it.
All right, now we'll discuss as P and Z Commissioners. Dale, you want to go first?
I'm fine.
All right. Dave? I have no comment.
The only other thing, just real quick, was the, there was some thing here about changing it or blinking with day and time, anything like that. Is that?
That's all.
Temperature and the date change.
That can change as many times as once, Larry, versus something else changing all the time.
Right.
Is that correct?
That's what my question was, is that addressed in here?
Yeah. Isn't it on?
Well, the change just says two surrounding properties, including signs that provide moving spotlights. It doesn't talk about the time. None of that is changing, that I see.
It says it in some, when the note, it's mentioned in the note on the one. It just mentions it about the addition to time and temperature, which, you know, time and temperature changes.
Oh, got it.
I think that's, it's an applet comment. It's not in the initial one.
Yeah, so I guess that was the only thing, is that? Nothing in here that would prohibit that, right?
No, but I, no, I think that the, you know, when they vetted this out, that, you know, they saw that as not really needed to put in this ordinance.
Okay.
Anything else, Dave?
Nope.
Mark? For a motion to approve? Oh, we got a motion now. I guess we'll vote, any, all in favor, say aye? Aye. Nay? That'll unanimous approval of the first ordinance for the signs. Thank you very much. All right. Second thing is a hearing to ordinance to amend Chapter 185 zoning Table 2 with bedrooms of the Municipal Code relating to maximum floor area and maximum number of bedrooms in Chapter 185-60 concerning the extension of non-conforming properties. So, you see the ordinance there. Really what this is about is you got, this is what it's all about. It's just changing to clarify if you have two houses, you know, like, you know, I was, you know, associated with a property, had two houses on the same property, it's non-conforming. And you want to do something with both those houses. Like, you don't want to tear it down. If you tear it down and go to code, then it won't be non-conforming, and you just do whatever the code says. But here, you know, right now, you could probably put eight bedrooms in one, or whatever, whatever, in the other one, and you know, put all these bedrooms on this one property. So, now what this does is that limits that. This makes it where you're only going to get a total of eight bedrooms on that property. And you can see that, and that's for the NR and the RR districts. Jimmy O'Connor, just join us. Hello, Jimmy. And we're on the, we're on the signs ordinance thing. And let me pass you a copy of the ordinance to Jimmy. A copy of the agenda, Jimmy? So, it's just a simple, you see that one sentence on Page 2 of the ordinance? And then the highlighted, Item 5 added. So, the sentence is basically for non-conforming properties, which, when you got the two houses on there, on the, on that property, with two single-family structures, the maximum for square footage and number of bedrooms shall apply to the two structures. So, and then it says such an extension shall be permitted only for the maximum square footage, number of bedrooms, floor ratio applicable to the property. So, basically boiled that, boil all that down into you only get eight bedrooms on that property if you decide to do something to those two houses. I think that's what it says. Any, you guys want to say anything before we go to the public for comments?
I did have a question. This is something we talked about before when we do the bar, I mean, floor area ratio. I thought the maximum was six bedrooms.
Not on the, not on the table, the way, for lots of 7,500 square foot or greater, the max square foot is 5,200, and shall be calculated in the same manner for lot, and the same is for lots less than the 7,500, the maximum number of bedrooms. Is that last sentence on Page 2. Eight per dwelling. We never talked about that, that I remember in the discussions, or maybe we talked about that, I can't really remember, but.
Eight per property, right?
Eight, right. This makes it eight per property, non-conforming property. Yes, that's what's on the table, is just those properties have the two structures, and the owner wants to try to put eight and eight, and that's not happening no more. It's clarified to eight total. That's it. So, anybody from the public, Kate? All right, thank you. We'll close that out. Any comments from anyone else? See none? Looking for a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Anyone want to make a second?
Second.
All right, discussion? I have no comments. Dale? Nothing? All right. All right, Dave, see no comments from folks? Let's try to get the vote going. I guess at this point, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any nays? See no nays? All right, that takes care of that. Pretty simple stuff today, but it's very important for Town Hall to get this, and we understand. We do our job to help them clarify. That will make their lives easier. When it comes time, write a permit for somebody. Lucky them. All right. Third thing, public hearing and ordinance to amend Chapter 185-80 Municipal Code relating to provisions regarding renewal building permits. I don't think, we don't need an ordinance per our attorney. And basically, the wording that was requested was that, I'll just read it. It's basically, it's basically put, you know, just saying, you know, permit can last another, you know, it's a year. And you could, well, I'll read it. Building permits, this is 73-3 of building permits. Basically, it's G and C. Building permits shall be valid for one year from the date of issue and may be renewed one time for one additional year, provided renewal is applied for prior, is applied for prior to the expiration date. Projects for which permit has expired or will require a new permit based on current construction cost estimate before continuing any work of the project. And then they modify pretty much similar wording in 185-80, where it shall be valid for one year and may be renewed one time for one additional year, provided renewal is applied for prior to the extension date. And projects for which permits has expired will require new permit based on current construction cost estimate before continuing work on the permit. I've got extensive experience with this, and that's kind of standard-type language. Some, you know, different municipalities allow different lengths of time. Dewey seems to be doing well with the one plus one, but they clarified that you got to start, you know, over if, you know, you let it expire the second time, which that is, I don't think that, personally, I don't think that's too unreasonable. And I hope that that helps clarify things for Town Hall. Any comments from the Planning, Zoning Board on that? See none? Fred?
So, we will need an ordinance eventually. So, if you all, if you all recommend, or make a recommendation, then I'm going to draft an ordinance in accordance with that recommendation for the planning commissioners, or for the council, excuse me, to consider.
That's excellent. Okay, so our motion here, if we're going to make a motion, will be we recommend that a ordinance be drafted in concert with the items, the two items in 71-3, building permits, G, 185-80, C, and anywhere else that it may be needed that we didn't see prior to the meeting to implement the one plus one. And if it's expired, you have to reapply what I just stated.
So, presently, these two provisions are not consistent with one another. And you may wish to hear from Dawn Hinks or Jim Deeds on this.
They're inconsistent, need to be fixed. I mean, it's standard stuff, but if they want to talk, we're going to open it up to the public first. So, public first? Jimmy, need to say anything else on that? Or Dawn? All right. I mean, it's pretty, pretty simple, but it's great clarification. I do appreciate Town Hall for giving us the opportunity to weigh in, because we do have a lot of construction and business experience on this board. Looking over at Mark, he's semi-retired, but I know he's still got that hammer in his hand. Anyway.
There was in the package, there was an ordinance, Fred, that somebody had marked up. So, I don't know if it was.
Yeah, somehow I didn't.
Because it's got an, there is an ordinance here. It speaks to directly 185. It doesn't address 71, but there was.
Can maybe help clarify.
Yeah, go ahead, Kate.
So, originally, Dawn's major concern was that there were two sections of the code, one in the zoning code and one under, I think it was licensing, something like that, that were a little bit different, but referring to both renewal of building permits. So, Fred's suggestion was that we could basically cut out the section about renewals in the zoning code. That's what that ordinance refers to.
Okay.
All that does is just direct readers back to Chapter 71. That way, going forward, if there's any further changes, we're not changing things in two places every time. If that makes sense. And then Commissioner Persinger put in the action item 3, those suggestions, just as a secondary. So, that's kind of up to you guys, if you wanted to pass on the recommendation for the ordinance that we drafted.
Yeah.
Or not. It's basically giving you two options to look at.
All right, I think we're going to take, we'll take Fred's option. We'll, the recommendation I talked about, and just pass it on to Fred to draft an ordinance in spirit with what we talked about. If you guys are okay with that, and I see head nods.
Yes.
All right. Anything from, Jim, or anyone on that? And then we'll move forward if not? Nope? All right. So, looking for a motion to approve a recommendation to have Fred draft an ordinance in concert with the 71-3 wording and 185 wording, and any other inconsistencies, clean them up and turn them into an ordinance for Town Hall to make it so that you have the consistent wording in the code to allow for a one-year permit, a one-year renewal of that permit if you get it before it expires. But if it expires, you got to, you know, start, get a new permit.
That would be one time, one renewal.
Yes, that's correct. Yep. And clarify anywhere there's an inconsistency, and that's what our recommendation to Town Hall will be. So, motion? Motion for that? Motion from Jimmy O'Connor for that? And a second by Mark? Any discussion?
So, I'll just say, I'll just say. So, we've got an ordinance here that amends the zoning code. And then we're going, I'm going to draft another ordinance that will amend Chapter 71. And the two together will constitute your, this body's recommendation to the council.
That's correct. That's the intent of the motion.
Building permit fee, that's the change, too.
Yeah, because, you know, if the costs go up on a cost estimate, the permit fee goes up a teeny bit.
Maybe renew on each anniversary date thereafter for a fee of $50. So, that has to change.
Very good.
Yep. All right. Any other discussion? I see none? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any nays? Unanimous for the permit action? This is on the agenda. And we will proceed to the next item, the public hearing regarding appropriate time requirements related to expiration of special exceptions or variances granted by the Board of Adjustment. Commission members will discuss and develop recommendations made to the Town Council regarding potential amendments to 185-70 of the Municipal Code. And that is the red, the red and orange thing that was in the, in the package. So, that's specifically 185-70, where it says lapse of special exception or variance. And the red was deleted. So, what was deleted was where it says after the Board of Adjustment has approved a special exception or granted a variance, the, and they deleted that, and they start with in general, a special exception, and in general, A, and that's the only words they changed. A special exception or variance approved by the Board of Adjustment shall lapse after the expiration of one year. So, the intent of this is to say that the special exception lapses unless, all right? And they give, you know, some special considerations for certain circumstances that Town Hall would deal with, or that are allowed in the code, so they won't have to have any ambiguity. And it's a transparent revision, for transparency. So, basically, you know, if it's, if you got your variance and you're not done construction, that's Item A. Item B is if, and this is the new adder, on B, Board of Adjustment shall lapse after one year unless a building permit has been applied for and the expiration of one year after approval of the special exception or variance. Because you could go, you could go get your variance, and then you apply for a permit, but you got to, you know, go do something, you know, your architect's, you know, takes a little longer, or whatever. And the next thing you know, you only got two months to build a house, you know, and that's not fair. So, you know, they want to make sure they have that tool in their toolkit. And it's codified, which is a beautiful thing for Dawn, I'm sure, because now, you know, she won't have to like, kind of say, oh, you can or can't if that ever happens, or you got to go back to Board of Adjustment, which nobody wants to go back, and it makes everybody angry. And this makes it very transparent. And that's the great, the major modification to this Section 185-70 of our code that's titled lapse of special exception or variance. And then C stayed the same. And D was just some editorial things. And the way it reads in the end is the Board of Adjustment has specified a period longer. That's, that's if the Board of Adjustment specifies a longer period in a year. Because the Board of Adjustment can say, hey, we're going to say this thing's good for three years, because we know it's going to take you a while to get this, that, or the other, and therefore, whatever. So, this makes that transparent and codifies it so that, I guess Dawn won't have to go like digging through minutes or something of a Board of Adjustment being, you know, a year ago, or whatever. And that's what that is. And so, it's a recommendation to the town so that Fred would draft an ordinance for that? Or we're just going to recommend it, Fred? How's that going to work?
You got to draft an ordinance. I mean, if you recommend against making these changes, then I won't draft an ordinance. So, just report if you recommend it against making these changes.
So, I said enough there. I want to give the opportunity for Planning, Zoning Commissioners to say anything on that. See none? Fred or Bill, anything? And on the internet, we see others. And Gary would like to talk. And then anybody from the public. So, go ahead, Gary.
Just, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I would just point out that the last sentence of that section is also new language. It wasn't in the text.
Okay. I apologize. Let me read that. The special.
Go ahead.
So, after D, which is, there's A, B, C, D, those are the, you know, you know, things that, you know, say that it won't expire unless, all right? And then it says, the final sentence says, the special exception or variance for any project for which a building permit has been obtained shall lapse if construction is not completed within the timeframe for which the building permit remains valid. That's to clarify that, you know, that's somebody can't somehow twist the story around on Town Hall, where they would say, hey, well, my variance hadn't expired, but my permit has or has not, and twist the story around. This just clarifies that, right? Thank you, Gary, for pointing that out, because I didn't notice that that was new. All right?
So, what we just approved was, you know, a permit. You could get a permit, it's good for one year, and you can renew it. So, we are saying here that theoretically, if there's a change with Board of Adjustments, get your first permit, it's good for one more year. Why would we just change the permit, life of a permit, right?
The special exception or variance for any project for which a building permit has been obtained shall lapse if construction is not completed within the timeframe of the building permit. So, they're not going to link it back to the variance.
Right. So, now it's just the building permit?
Yes.
This is Dawn. Can anybody hear me?
Yes, Dawn, go ahead.
I apologize for breaking in. However, I do have a question. This particular ordinance, or recommendation, rather, will it apply from now into the future? Or will it apply to prior and past variances and exceptions that have been approved, let's say, several years ago? And then they, being the property owners, would now like to, or the new property owners would now like to take advantage of that variance?
Well, everything I've seen says going forward, but I would not be opposed myself if a variance was approved a couple of years ago, only because, I mean, you know, if I bought a house and they had a variance, and I wanted to do that, or whatever, till it, and I couldn't, I might be upset, but that's just my opinion. So, I think we should get an opinion from each one of our Planning, Zoning Members, whether or not they want to grandfather in past variances or not in the recommendation.
Dawn, this is Dale Cook. Are you saying there are people who already have variances that have not started or have not completed with those variances? And you're asking, should this regulation be grandfather them in and let them go on and on? Or include them in the code that we're asking for the change now? Is that what you're asking?
To a degree, yes. Because I know one variance and special exception will be potentially running out effective in the next two months. I know of another that, in my research of the property, a variance was given for setbacks. And this was probably, and I can't remember all details at this moment. I don't have my notes in front of me. That they were given that exception and the variance approval three to four years ago? And now there's new property owners that I have heard, I have not received any applications, none of this, for new building permits in which to possibly use that variance. So, this is somewhat of a question that I'm trying to get answered so that when these folks come in, I'll know.
Now, that's a good question. I don't think that we can limit somebody previously, right?
Well, we have a provision in the code right now that would apply, which says that, that a special exception or granted variance lapses after one year. So, that's, that's the law that applies until we change the law. So, if there's a three-year-old variance out there, it has lapsed.
So, I'm going to support the current code. That's just my opinion, but if you want to, it looks like Dale. Any other discussion? All right. Public, any, anybody in front of public want to comment? All right, so we're looking for a recommendation, a motion for a recommendation to ask our attorney to draft ordinance in spirit with a conversation that would not grandfather old, you know, already lapsed variances, since the code was clear and existed in the past. So, anybody want to make that motion?
So, move.
Dale made the motion, looking for a second.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? I see none? Look for a vote. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All in favor, say, or anybody who is against it, say nay? Nay? That's a unanimous vote for this lapse of special exception or variance discussion.
So, here's a question. Based on a comment I heard just a minute ago, is it not anticipated by this group that someone whose variance is about to expire could go back to the Board of Adjustment and ask for that to be extended?
Yeah, it's not, we didn't adjust that, but I think that's part, the process allows that.
Where does it allow that?
Oh, you mean in our ordinance? Well, let's, can we say that we can, we've got to go back and redo this one?
Well, first of all, it's a question. I mean, is that what we intend?
I would like that as an intent, though, to be allowed to do that, but let's look at, are you guys okay with that? Yeah, just ones that haven't expired, we could go back for a new one. Yeah.
Well, not for a new one, but for an extension. Covid happened, and I think my builder quit or something.
We would recommend you put that in, and there's, you know, if you would. Jim, do you have a comment on that?
Fine, I'm fine.
Sir?
Fred's comments, I'm fine.
Takes care of that clarification. Fred, thanks for being so thorough in your thoughts on that, because we don't want to miss detail like that, and that could hurt somebody, you know, if they only had, like, a couple of days left on their variance.
It's not like we're not grandfathering somebody in. It's already gone. They've missed their chance of three years old.
Right, yeah, exactly, yeah. That's like, I guess, I guess you're, start over. That's clearly codified, and that's, that is no gray area there. All right. So the last, next item is, "Public hearing regarding establishment of clear specifications for the number of driveway entrances permitted on any lot in Dewey Beach. Commissioned members will discuss and develop recommendations to be made to the Town Council regarding potential amendments to Chapter 185-87 of the Municipal Code, and for discussion." I guess, I guess there's just, there's not a draft ordinance on that, correct? So we're just going to just go ahead and just talk about it and do a recommendation, yeah. So that is, there was some documentation that was talked about. There was even a diagram in the Code Discrepancies Review that we sent around, and it basically looks at, or it looks like, at zoning, Section 4. No, no, that's the wrong one, that's the wrong one, I'm sorry.
Streets and right of way. Eighty-five dash eighty-seven.
Yeah, that's the first one. Apologize. Yeah. So, yeah, 185 dash eighty-seven, streets and right of way, is where we would be recommending that our attorney, Fred, would draft up an ordinance, and we would be recommending, if the commission so approves, to talk about the driveways where the driveway entrances, the maximum, well, the maximum width of any driveway would be 20 feet, but it's like, can you have two tens? Or if you've got a corner lot, can you have two tens plus one around a corner, that'd be three? And, you know, where I'm at, I was thinking you could have two tens or 120. If you have a corner lot, you could have one plus one. That's what I was thinking, but I don't know what anybody else is thinking. The corner lot have, say, corner lot more than two driveway entrances, two on one street and a third around the corner. I have no harsh feelings about that, and I'm just going to open it up for discussion to the planning and zoning commissioners, then for the public to comment, and other town officials. So Dale wants to go first.
Let's remember that not too long ago, we told people they had to have fewer, they didn't have to have as many parking spots on their property as they were originally required per bedroom. So that pushed more cars onto the street, off their private property onto the street. Now, if you have more driveways, you'll push, you'll make even fewer parking spots, because the more openings you have to the street, the fewer parking spots you have. You have to look at it as, down the road, Dewey's going to have more and more people bringing cars here. I mean, there's people now that have corner lots that are building two properties on the corner lot, and it's obvious they can't put cars on the lot itself. And that's why they want the driveways, and they'll be pushing more cars onto the street the more driveways we have, so just remember that. I think, excuse me, I think the total of 20 feet, which is 20 feet, or two 10-foot is proper, and I don't mind whether the 10-foot is around the corner, and one 10-foot is on the second street, or which side the 20-foot one is, but just as long as they're limited to one 20-foot or two 10-foot.
So you have, what I'm hearing, I think, I know what I just heard, so I won't even repeat it. Okay.
I have two comments, I guess. Wasn't it not long ago that we decided that one of these corner lots, that there would be one that was basically the major or the frontage? We had a discussion about what constitutes the frontage.
That's correct. They have to choose what frontage.
Which one was the frontage? So I guess the only question I have here is, now we're allowing people to park on perhaps what is not the frontage. You have a driveway that maybe isn't the frontage, and a driveway that is considered the frontage, or the corner lot. I guess my other question is, so if that's on something like Baird, or something that's owned by the state, is there an issue with a curb cut? I mean, what is?
Well, it does have, the current code has driveway entrances, maybe construction no closer than 50 feet to any intersection.
Right.
So, you know, at least you got a safety aspect there. Not sure about curbs. I don't think there's any curbs on the ordinance.
I can't think of any curbs except for on Route 1.
Right.
There's only no curbs in the more backwards.
I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, you're still talking.
No, it's okay.
No, I mean, just the simple fact, the more cuts you have into the right of way, the less parking spots you have, and we are going to need parking spots to beat all hell in the future. First time, two years ago, first time I saw every parking spot in the north end taken. I couldn't believe it. You know, when I say every parking spot, on my street, Tethic Street.
That's amazing itself.
Lots, I mean, that was the last street in town, and every spot was taken. People were driving around looking, go to the other street.
All right, so you're for two tens, and, you know, you can have one on the corner or one on the other. Or a 20, two tens or a 20.
But we're not counting who's for what yet, because we haven't heard from the public, and we haven't heard.
Right, right, this is what Dale was saying, Dave, you're.
I just, one other question, maybe Dawn can help, is that if you cut two driveways, is that, does that allow you then to do like a roundabout and connect the two driveways?
If we're doing your property, why not?
Yeah, you can do that. It's like down on Salisbury Street. And is that a maximum number of feet then that the driveway can be? Is there a limit to how?
You'd have to have, you have to have 30 feet between those two entrances.
20 feet.
So you can have a 10, 20 feet gap, and then a 10.
Right.
The way the code is written right now.
Can you connect those two tabs?
Yeah, you can have a two 10, and Dawn, if you want to add, or Jim, any comment on that?
It is simply a grand total of 20 feet that goes onto that site or parcel in two different kinds of configurations. One consistent 20-foot wide, or however you want to get it, a 10-foot driveway entrance, a minimum of a 20-foot gap between that and the next driveway entrance that can only be 10 feet. So both configurations are a total of 20 feet that goes onto that parcel, lot, or site.
One other question, is that, is that the depth of the driveway too? Because you're talking about, what's the depth of the driveway?
There's whatever your.
There's no, none of them.
There isn't.
So if somebody puts a driveway here, and then they have 20 feet, and they put a driveway here, and then they put pavers in the middle to make it look like it's theirs, to stop them from doing that?
So when they go to apply, and Jim, you can, they go to apply, they have to get a permit to put those pavers in, even though it's in the right of way, right? And when you look at it, as long as the pavers are pervious, so the water will go through, and they make the place look nicer than it already is, most of the times, when those permits come in, unless there's some reason or somebody has an objection in that area, most of the times those permits are permitted. Correct on, and Jim?
Yes.
Yes.
My question is, it looks like the homeowner's property, and you can't park there.
Right, there's multiple homeowners around town that have been doing that for years on almost every street in town, where they, especially in the north end, where they put pavers in. It looks nice. What we try to do is come in and put a public parking sign in that area to tell the public they can park there. Now, sometimes the homeowner, there was one last year in the north end, did not want that sign there, Jim ended up taking care of it, but, I mean, we have to let the people know they can park in those paving areas, right? That that paving area doesn't belong to the property, and that's the only way we can really do it, unless we write on the actual pavers, public parking, we don't want to do that.
Are you going to do the yellow again, to show where the driveways are?
Yes, we are. We just, the town had its maintenance person retire, and then we had to hire a new maintenance person. It took some time to do that, and they've been concentrating on lifeguard stands and getting the parking meters and the parking up, so we will be doing that, yes. I mean, I'm just going to say, these are examples of homes in the north end, just to take the whole front, and it's all covered in stone, and they park all.
And in town, you know, addressing that, that's a good thing.
It's in the code, we're following the code, unless the code's changed, we're going to follow the code.
All right.
So Dawn identified that the current provision lacks some clarity for larger lots and for corner lots, so that's what she's asking this group to consider. I don't know how many larger lots we have than 50 feet. I know there's one tract on the bay that's larger. If there was some kind of a redevelopment of one of these big tracts of land, they might not be able to apply or comply with this existing standard, and they might need a variance. You know, if you had a four-acre parcel, it might not make any sense that you're allowed just two 10-foot.
That situation go to Board of Adjustment?
That could go to the Board of Adjustment, or we could try and clarify it, or we could say it's too complicated to clarify, we should just let it go to the Board of Adjustment.
Well, how could it go to the Board of Adjustments? You have to have, what's the term for it?
Well.
A hardship.
Right.
Yeah, you can't create your own hardship, and then go to the Board of Judgments and have hardship.
Well, you can, actually. You can say, look, I want to make a normal improvement to this property, and a normal improvement involves the major redevelopment of the property, and if it qualifies as a normal improvement, and yet there's something about your property, maybe its size in comparison to the standard, which refers to 50-foot lots, I mean, this is, the way it's written, it almost is suggesting that this is the standard for lots that are 50 feet, but not the standard for lots that are greater than 50 feet. That's what Dawn is bringing to our attention.
What if you combine two lots? If you combine two lots in the one lot? Now, what does that do with it?
Well, there are some corner lots also that are one and a half lot.
Well, you have, you end up with, you end up with 100, you know, lots, 100 feet or whatever. So we could recommend that this item three here in 185-87, you scratch, you scratch, you say, you can say sites shall have, you just scratch with a frontage of 50 feet or less, shall have no more than one 20-foot wide driveway or two 10-foot wide driveway, regardless of how wide it is. I mean, you see any houses, you know, away from Dewey, you know, you've got these big mansions, they got one driveway, 10 feet wide. Come on, bro, get with it. So, you know, it's like, and down here, you've got these teeny tiny lots, we're giving them two driveways. So to me, I'm with Dale. Two, and one on the corner or not, and we should scratch, we're going to recommend you scratch that.
We are.
Scratch.
Wait a minute, if you scratch the 50 foot.
All right, unless you got, you got a better wording, Jim, go ahead, talk to us.
I think one of the factors we struggle with, and just when we listen to people that want to develop their property, if you recall some time ago, it was in where Ivy's is, they came in and they recommended a, and you all approved, a development of multiple townhomes in that area. That's almost one acre of land. Now, our current standard says, and it applies to commercial as well, not just to the NR District.
Okay, all right.
120-foot or two 10. So that's something that we would like that you all leave, or just take a look at it. If it is what it is, that's great. I want to comment on Dale's comment about if you combine a lot, if you combine and you rezone a lot from one parcel, from two parcels to one parcel, to, let's say, it's a one 5,000 square foot and another 5,000 square foot, our interpretation would be, you're only entitled to one 10-foot or two 20. That's it, because it's a lot, we go by lots. So if we want to change it, you can look at changing it by looking at the size of the lot that Dawn kind of commented on. Do they, are they entitled for another driveway? Or we just hold firm and say, no matter what size the lot is, you get one, two 10s or one 20? That's the issue.
Ah, yeah, I don't want to create a problem with being so restrictive. So can we, I'm going to try to find a way, maybe we could craft our recommendation to have Town Hall look at the, if it's a larger lot, allow a little more flexibility? Is that?
I'm not sure. I'm not sure.
Okay, okay, I mean, I'm just looking for reactions here, so, okay. So, I mean, to me, I'm back to where I said a minute ago, I'm going to follow Dale. You know, Dale was thinking, he really wasn't thinking a 50-foot lot, or 75-foot lot, or 100-foot lot. I think that, personally, I think, back to what I said earlier, I think that two 10-foot lots or a 20-foot, two 10-foot driveways on your lot, or one 20-foot, I think that's enough, but I don't want to ever restrict.
No matter the size of the one lot.
What's that?
No matter the size.
No matter the size of the lot.
You're doing two.
Yeah. Is that where you guys are at? Okay, do we have any, I see Gary's got his hand up, so Gary, comment?
Yeah, I'm just pointing out, there is draft language that's included in the materials today that does accomplish that for any size lots, for you to consider.
So if we, Dale's statement does clarify it good enough, you think?
Well, there is some draft language in the materials.
Okay, yes.
There's no ordinance, but there is draft language.
All right, thank you, Gary, or Commissioner Persinger, I apologize. All right. So I think we're ready to open up for public discussion. Any, any commissioners want to say anything? Hold on, we're going to the public, and I see someone from the public. I recognize your face, but I can't remember your name.
Mary, we are Nine Bellevue.
Bellevue, okay.
So, Miss.
We saw your email.
We've got, we're broadcasting this, so we do need you to step up to the mic.
So I have a property at Nine Bellevue, and the parking spot in front of it, I've lived there for 35 years, and we purchased a house, the information you were speaking about earlier, about bedrooms and parking spaces, we were adhering to that, and we've never had a problem. It's a parking pad. I really don't have a driveway, anyway, a driveway situation will work, because there's nowhere to drive into. And it is also, at this particular time, called a condo. It's a Guthrie Jigmaroo condo.
Okay, whatever that is.
He took sheds, and he turned them into houses, and then he was able to turn them into a condo. So I have 60% ownership of the land rights out on the 55-100 lot. And so the parking space that I've been using for 35 years, we can get three or four vehicles in, head-on parking. So this 20-foot, so I think what I need to do is just go to the Board of Adjustments and file hearing pursuant to the 185-361 for an exception or special use exception or variance, because I, in using the, you have to just, I can bring pictures, and that's what I say, I have all of my stuff, which I can go to them with, because obviously you all.
So let me get this right, there's six structures, six different condos on this?
No, there's one house.
One house, okay.
With a little cottage behind it.
Okay.
50 by 100.
Okay.
I am the principal owner of the property. 60% say over how the land usage is done, whether it's incorporating a debt between each other, but in the, just in the parking situation, we had four parking spaces plus one more because of the bedroom to parking situation, which you now say you have alleviated that somehow, but I do not know that, because I'm not building a house. You can only pull into my pad, the parking pad, I can't make a driveway.
So there's no room because of the structure with your lot? It's non-conforming or whatever, and you can't make a driveway? And if we did a 20-foot, you couldn't get four cars there because, and you got two structures?
And then the house behind is screwed off, too. And there's a variance, and there's an easement also for another vehicle.
Is there any way we can handle this in this instance, so she doesn't have to get a Board of Adjustment? I mean, put her through that? Is there any way we could write it? I mean, put there her, not just her, but people have this same condition, like if you have a non-conforming use, and it's as wide as a lot, how are they going to make a driveway?
There's a lot we don't know, and I think we need to look into.
And that's why.
So if it's a condominium, there should be a declaration plan.
Yes.
And the declaration plan should have a depiction of the condominium, and it should show where all the parking is.
I have it.
Yeah, well, that would be really important for us to look at.
I have it, if you want to look at it. But I can take it to the other meeting.
I think it would be at the Commissioners' meeting when you go with this ordinance, Fred, maybe, would it? I'll let Fred talk.
I don't know how, I don't know that we know enough to craft any kind of a legislative answer that would apply not just to this individual, but to anyone.
I can't be.
I mean, there are, there are properties all up and down.
The condo has a driveway that goes back to it, right?
No.
Yeah, she can't make one, because.
It was an asphalt parking pad when we moved in, in front of the house, I mean, a black cop, when we moved in.
So a driveway entrance, you should understand, is not, it's something that is designated on your property, but it is, it's not as if you can't make any of your property has.
Well, what if it was there when you arrived?
Well, that doesn't matter, unless that declaration plan is signed off on by the city, or by the town, excuse me, and that might establish some rights that you have. So I would be more than happy to look at that. It could be that it was done in error. We'll have to look at it and figure it out.
So, yeah, is it appropriate, is it appropriate for me to say, this, you know, we won't be able to address it in this meeting, but you definitely want to get down to Town Hall?
If there's more information about that, would be.
Yeah, I think you schedule a meeting with Town Hall, is that, would that be appropriate, Fred?
I met with Mary today, we discussed this.
Okay.
I told her, the way the current code is, the way I've looked at what she's shown me so far, is she can either have one 20-foot or two 10s. Right now, she has two 10s.
Oh, which are none of it, only one is in front of my residence.
So she has 10 feet on her pad in front of her, right? And the other part of the pad, she can pull a car in, but somebody can pull in behind her legally, the way the code's written. Then she has a 10-foot on the side of her house that, correctly promoted, you let folks use for the back.
An Airbnb gets privy to.
That they get, because on her lot, she has a separate structure in the back.
Oh, you can get through there, so you can do.
Well, you can't go anywhere, but you, I have an easement.
All right, so, yeah, so I think, yeah, we'll go ahead with our ordinance or our recommendation, we don't, you know, it'd be a Town Commissioners' approval, but then, you know, I'd work with them on your situation, but I don't think we, you know, like Fred said, we're not going to be able to legislate anything today.
So I should just make an appeal to the Board of Adjustments and meet with them and show them my case and let them decide.
Yeah, that's not a question for this group, but that's something that I think, I think the town's just hearing about this, right? I'm just hearing about it.
That's fine.
So I think, I think you'll find that we're more than happy to make time to look into any individuals' questions and concerns, and we'll see if we can't address yours, and if we can't, we'll recommend the best approach.
I mean, I did, I've gone around town, and I really haven't found anything as close to my situation.
So isn't, isn't there a situation just like this off the side? So isn't, isn't there a situation just like this off the side of the patron area to Dewey, to Dewey Beer Company? Across the street from the, from the outside patron area at Dewey Beer Company, there are pavers that are.
Pollies?
Across, across the whole lot, right? And then, then there's a little, there's a little raised paver, um, that is kind of showing, although most people wouldn't think that that meant anything. What that means is you could parallel park your car in that spot, right in front of that person's house.
We have a number of those in the north end, yeah.
And you, and there's one on Rodney that's like that, across from the office, just a little bit towards the bay, right? So just because there are pavers there doesn't mean that you can't comply with the code. I mean, the question is, is the town going to designate these open areas between the driveway entrances that you say you need for public parking?
Well, the, the code says it's public parking. We can't, the town's not gonna designate it, the code says it is. The town would, might, town might say there's an exception because of a good reason.
The, the code says you're entitled to two tens or one 20. And in a situation where you can't tell where the parking is, then the town and the property owner have to probably meet, and the property owner needs to say, I want two tens on either side of this, or I want one 20 right in the middle. And the town might say, well, we can give you one 20, but it can't be in the middle because it doesn't allow for any parking on either side. So, so it has to be approved. And even though the whole thing is suitable for parking because it's paved or because it's got pavers on it, or whatever else, that doesn't mean that you can't comply with this. You just have to meet with the town. The town has to know what it is that you consider to be your driveway entrances or entrance, and then the town will react accordingly. By desert, by maybe painting the street out, um, you know, maybe painting in the right of way, saying this is available for, for city parking, or town parking.
They have yellow stripes on it, probably.
All right.
Fred, I, I do have a question, or interpretation.
Jim?
Jim.
Mr. Dietz?
If, listening to what Fred just commented on, wouldn't it be better if town administration met with Fred to go over what he just said? Because we've got quite a few homes in that situation, not as bad as, uh, as, as it says, uh, but regardless, it, uh, our only solution in the past always has been if you really, we can't authorize anything more than we already got, go to the board of adjustment for a special exception, which deals with parking. And, uh, I think we could stretch driveways in, saying there's access to parking on the, on the property. But I, I think if we just opened it up right now, thinking about the ramifications of multiple homes, and interpretations of that if they can't get in, or non-conform property, there's no way they can get a, a 10-foot or a 20-foot or two 10-foot in there, that we're responsible to, or somebody's gonna have to give the town administrators the authority to go ahead and make an approval to cross off on public property two 10-foot or one 20-foot. That's what we're talking about, if it gets to that level.
Thank you, Jim. All right, uh, Mary, thank you very much. I'd talk, talk with the town, uh, as, as they gave you some advice. Appreciate it. Wish you the best of luck on that, that's, uh, you know.
And it's on Bellevue Street, so with the Vanderwinds and the claw coming into play, it's gonna be even harder to get home.
Exactly. Well, I would take care of that quickly, because whatever we say today, you know, it'll, it'll be in the next month's commissioners' meetings, you might want to take care of it between now and then.
Just do with filing through on the online service.
Um, I would just go to town hall and schedule a meeting with them. Yeah, that's what I'd do first.
All right, well, get from there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a great day, have a great summer. Hope to see you on the beach somewhere.
All right.
So now we're, we're on this back end, so we're, we're looking for, well, first of all, is there anyone else in the public out there that would like to talk? See none. And, uh, we're gonna close the meeting, close the public hearing, uh, for, uh, the day. And now we're back to the planning and zoning commissioners, and we're looking for a recommendation, um, maybe, uh, in concert with what Dale said, or maybe Dale can make it, and we could see what we think.
Well, I, I want to recommend that we, that we request Fred write a, um.
Ordinance.
Ordinance to make it as it stands now, or if you understood it, it stood at one 20-foot or two 10-foot driveway with a 20-foot spot in between.
Well, I don't know if we have to say 20, uh, I think that's already there, but I'd say, you know, either one 10, two, either get one 20-foot, yeah, or two 10-foot driveways, uh, you know, corner lot or not, in accordance with the other provisions of the code, uh, and that's kind of what you're trying to recommend, right, Dale?
Okay, I'm just thinking that, I really don't have a problem with, if you had two 10-foot, one, one 10-foot on one street, one 10-foot on the other, maybe that can be complicated.
It's not, no, it's not.
As long as it's 50 feet away from the intersection.
Fifty?
The way it's written is as long as it's.
But the authority specification, if you're going, you're gonna say you got a two 10-foot or one 20-foot area, you know.
Add, no matter what size lot it is.
And regardless of the size of the lot.
Regardless of that.
Right.
And clean up any code needed.
That's what I'm requesting.
Hold on, that's a recommendation, so let's get a, a second to that order.
Second to that.
Now we'll discuss. Fred, you want to say something?
So the ordinance, as it currently reads, says, I think, what, what the motion is. So, so in effect, I think you're saying we don't, you're not recommending any change to the, to the code.
Well, with the exception of any size lot, see what I'm saying? I think he said that, right?
Yeah, it doesn't, so, Fred, I don't think there's anything in the code that allows for corner lots, right?
Okay, so you.
Or is that, is that?
So, so you'd like me to clarify that the existing code, and it limits you to two 20, or two tens and one 20, applies equally to corner lots and to lots that are larger than.
All ones.
It takes care of those two buttons.
Two, one, ten.
Those of the ones.
Except we got a second on that already. Any other discussion, Fred, or any, you say, major?
No.
Let's go with, uh, let's go with, uh, vote, uh, all in favor or aye?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, any needs? It's a unanimous vote by the planning and zoning commission on that item. And I think that's our, we, we, that's our last item. Any comments from the committee members? That's item six there. See none? Uh, looking for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
For a second? All in favor or aye?
I don't want to go back to where I'm, sorry.
Thanks, Jim, thanks, Dawn.
Thanks, you all, yeah.